All right, so we'll call the February 2nd Planning Board Workshop Meeting to Order with the purpose of reviewing our Land Use and Development Ordinance book. I think we've all made -- I should not myself saying, I think, some general thoughts that we believe that the Shoreland should be its own book.
Agreed.
To avoid confusion with people and applications. And then, the book, this is a multi-meeting attempt to go through this because we need to go through the book, item by item. How would you guys like to do this tonight? Do you guys want to take small sections at the beginning? Do we want to assign out a section and start discussing it tonight and then doing some
Yeah, I think that, I think sectioning it off, I think the challenge that we're going to run into, that we've talked about before, is the comprehensive plan meeting to update everything again once that gets approved. But, you know, that's not a process that's going to take six months, it's a process that's going to take years.
Years. Is the Comprehensive Board even meeting yet?
Uh, meeting scheduled for the 22nd.
Okay.
So that'll be after your next meeting?
Correct.
But that's, again, a long process on their part as well.
Yeah. Yeah, I know that other towns that have done it, it's taken years.
Multiple years. And Harvey, are there no funds available to have this done by a professional group?
What, three, five?
The, the book itself? Desiree had mentioned that other towns have paid, like, a $10,000 fee to have somebody professionally go through the book.
Through this book?
Yeah. Or a book of similar.
You're coming up on doing a comprehensive plan, so through that, I think we may see some changes, and then I think we'll have to go through it ourselves. I don't know of any company that, you know, comes, but the state will probably suffice for something.
Okay.
And from that, we can determine if there are any, you know, substantial changes. But I don't know of any person that can look into it and make sure that there may be something.
Just people that have more, you know, experience with this than our boards, limited?
Yeah, there will be some changes, that's for sure. I also want to mention that the reform, the new site plan review form has been approved.
Excellent.
Great.
We'll ask about that last time.
Yep, good.
There was, there was one more small change, so I will bring that back to the board at the next meeting.
Okay.
So this is all working.
All right, so why don't we just start perusing Article 1, General Provisions?
Do we want to do that, or do we want to just say? So there's 118 pages, there's five O's?
Yeah.
So it's like 23, 24 pages apiece?
That would be, by my view.
You know. You've got Article, Article 1, and Article 2, Sections 1 through 5 are 20, 20 pages.
Okay. You want to take that?
We've got Article 2, so 20 would be 44, so down to 45, so you've got Article 2, Sections 6 and 7.
I can take those.
Seven, so, or where, we're at 46, so it's 70, so Article 2, Section 8.
Goes to Allen.
Goes to Allen.
I'll email him. Be like, you know that Shoreland thing you wanted to discuss? It's your homework.
Article 2, Section 9, and Article 3, so 80 would be 104, so Article 3.
Up to Section 7.
Sections, yep, 1 through 6. Give that to Mr. Handy. And then, the remainder, so.
That part.
Article 3, Section, so Section 6, see, this is one of those things in the Table Contents, there's like a random page break in the middle of it. So.
Continued.
Uh, Article 6, so, so Article 3, Section 7, and then Article 4 and, Article 4, 5, and 6.
Would be Roger.
Would be Mr. Roger, so.
So then you have the definitions as well, which is different pages?
Yep.
So I was just waiting on the definitions because you may find updating the comp plan and updating the shore, and you might have more stuff to add to the definitions.
Yeah. Does that make sense?
That was what, Article 3? You have Article 3, Section 7 through Article 5, section, uh, Article 5.
Yeah, so basically you have Article 3, Section 7 to the end of the book, not the appendices though.
[laughing]
Which sounds like a ton, but it's only.
It's not.
Article 4 is only two pages.
No, I know.
Well, there. Decisions made. So the point will be just to go through and look through it and see if there's any, anything that sticks out as.
Glaringly.
Glaringly needs updating, or sticks out as, you know, something that will cause a question, bring that to the group at the next.
Workshop.
Workshop meeting.
Okay.
Homework.
You guys want me to put together a list?
Jesse, we'd like your overview of this.
Yeah, you can have, you can have pages 1 through 118.
Let us know what you think.
I mean, there's anything, honestly, though, if there's anything in there that you know that's like, doesn't jive with something, or, yeah, you know, certainly, we would welcome that opinion, so. I think that'll, you know, none of us are certainly experts in this, so.
Desiree, did you hear everybody's parts?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, I wrote them down, I will, I'll put together an email to know if everybody.
Do you guys want to glance through some of these tables tonight and see if they jump out at us?
Yeah.
Because there's a table of tables at the back of the table of contents?
There is a table of tables.
So Table 16, I'm sorry, Table 1, 16.
Yep. So that's the permissible use table?
Correct.
Yeah, so do those codes cover everything, or are there additional? That would be my first thing, is, do the codes across the top?
Where is the key?
Uh, second.
I mean, I know it, but.
Next page.
Those part.
So is that a little bit of the key at the beginning of the table?
Yes.
Yes. Guys doing their work for me, appreciate that.
Oh, I didn't know this was your section, I thought it was mine.
Sure.
In the dimensional requirements, why is it that only rural and private forest?
It's on Table 1.
We're on Table 1 still, Jesse.
And that's it.
We're slow.
Yeah. Page is that old. Table.
Uh, Table, uh, Page 17.
Yeah, there's definitely some things in there, there's, so it says accessory structure 1, but it doesn't tell you what the 1 is.
It's two pages away.
Oh, I gotta go one other page?
Yeah, I was looking for the key to the table.
To another table, to another key, okay.
So maybe the key should be moved forward.
Okay.
Yeah, put the, put the key up out of the table?
Now, if we, if we make changes to the current, do we have to have a bottom table to be voted on, or do we, like, if we get all that information?
So what we do is, if there are, if the whole, the whole has to be built, and there are.
So how do you?
Jesus. This is just confusing.
Yeah, back and forth, back and forth.
Yeah.
Like you said, have a key at the bottom of each table, so you're gonna have to keep going back and forth.
Yeah, the key flips over from, it took keys on three different pages.
Exactly.
Rewrite your pin name notes, new word under the content.
Do you highlight those changes?
Like you have to require a site plan to get a barn built in firm and rest, farm and forest?
If you look up the definition in the lab, just allow it to break the lab. If we're looking for the definition, that's three parts.
No, we'll look up for Note 1, which is a D.
Okay.
C.
So one requires the same permits as the primary structure?
Yeah.
Or if the primary structure is non-conforming, is it requires a site plan?
That's on the additional building?
No, one.
For which one?
Under commercial accessory structure. You found the answer to that?
No, one can't be under, you can't do no sun or rural or farm and forest.
So is it two different, two different tables, so this, this Note 1, this, you have that?
Yeah, that could definitely be laid out.
Well, except for residential. Note 1 applies to every other category.
Right.
Just the general layout.
Yeah.
Except 1A is not on Page 66.
No. 1A is on Page.
Anybody know where Table 1A went? Well, I'm, Table 11 is up on 60, so maybe it meant Page, it's not 66. Jesse, do you know where the table is for land uses in Shoreland districts?
It is Page 80.
Page 80?
Yeah.
Not 66. Do you have a little computerized version of this?
I have, I have a PDF, I'll throw it to you.
Yeah. Okay. So that's, another issue right there is the wrong.
So.
Table number.
That's the land use in Shoreland District, so you would be, if you pulled the Shoreland Zone out of the land use book, you would be pulling this table, and it would be renumbered in the Shoreland book.
Right, but right now, if you look for it, it's on Page 80.
Yeah.
And it's listed as Page 16, 66 in the book. And, and in this one, the key is in the front, on Page 79.
Yep.
And the notes are in the front, so, does that make sense?
Again, back and forth.
But there are different abbreviations for allowed, prohibited.
Yeah.
Versus the ones that we're using in another table. So every table is going to have its own special codes. What is the definition of adjacent? I mean, I know what the definition is, but what is considered adjacent?
Next to, beside.
Yeah.
Not included across property.
Right, that's the definition, but like, adjacent within how many feet?
50 feet. We actually have a lawyer's interpretation of the word adjacent in our land use ordinance and have one with the letter R.
I am not surprised.
Is that the definition?
It's the acceptable definition, because my, when I was asking, I was looking at adjacent like, well, how close is adjacent?
Right.
And it was within 50 feet. So 55 feet running along a river is no longer a shoreline?
250 feet is a shore. And you didn't put in 250 feet of river a shoreline, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so that definition doesn't exist.
No.
In the book.
Adjacent?
Right.
It's not in the front.
We have an attorney's letter that should probably go in here.
Yeah, okay.
But the definition of adjacent.
It should definitely go in the definitions section.
Right. Well, really, the, the definitions are in the back of the book, you really only go to Table 1.
Okay.
Everything else is just interpretation?
Interpretation, Table 1.
Okay. So Table 1's our central part. Let's see if Page 19 holds dimensional requirements.
That's the one that Jesse had something to say about.
Yes.
Why rural and private forest are included in the notes.
The what?
Why rural and private forest in Table 2, that's what we have in the dimensional requirements, right?
Yep.
So those two are included in, included in the notes.
Table 2 is actually on Page Table 20, not on.
Number 19.
Do we have a listing for that, stuff that's missing?
No reason. Why it's excluded from the notes, whether somebody is in rural or private forest that needs a dimensional requirement, left it or moved or, that's what it feels for rather than the board.
Hmm.
You see it's excluded. There are a lot more village and village rural, smaller lot sizes.
Would you say the rural area has a lot of small lots currently? So are they trying to avoid more small lots?
Yep.
Where do you see that that's accepted in the notes? I guess I'm missing what you're saying.
In rural and private forest, there's no dimensions, see notes written the very first Q, so village is Notes 1 and 4, village rural is Note 4, rural is blank, private forest is blank.
Gotcha. Can those, those notes specifically call out what we can do? Got it.
There.
I'm with you. See, I got there.
All right, let's see what Page 24 holds. Not a table. That would be on Page 25. This is more just like a.
Just the tables.
We're just going through the tables, Jesse. And then, every other paragraph. Parking design standards.
Do you want that pullout to look like a table, like the other two tables?
I think it, it's just for consistency, it should look, tables should be tables, this more looks like just a chart. With the applicable notes indicating where they go, so you're not looking around everywhere. We still refer to parking spaces as stalls? Except for the carriages?
Drive some small cars.
Well, we do have carriages in town now, so.
That's true. All right, so Table 4 is actually on Page Table 26.
So you think for that, to make it look like a table?
Look like a table.
Wow. That is difficult to read.
Well, it's just very spaced out when it could be very simplified into a table format.
Library is usually under, under parking for people.
Yeah, how big is the library?
I mean, I think the other B's have a 820.
Does it even have a parking space?
No.
Okay.
Well, I mean, they could use a village and municipal parking lot, I guess it's.
Are any of these typically grandfathered?
Well, that library probably would be grandfathered.
But what is the, how do you, what is the qualification for grandfathering something?
I mean, it predates our work, which is.
Which is what, 1978?
1980.
Well, I was thinking about taking out their new little garden and putting parking spaces in, Harvey. It looked cute on Facebook, but, gone. Somebody's going to email Gene Stanley. All right, street standards, Table 30. Same thing, table.
And why isn't the piece above it a table?
What is the piece above it? Is it part of?
It's, uh, changes in grades connected to vertical curves in order to provide the following minimum stopping site distances. Design speed, stopping site distance.
It looks like it should be something.
Yeah.
And they get it at the bottom of the page, too.
Which is different than the one above.
I guess you guys are making the tables.
But why are there two different sets of numbers?
I don't know.
One is for.
Stop and change.
Changing in grades.
And one is for site.
And one is for.
Site.
New streets.
So for instance, on a 35 mile an hour road, you need to have 250 feet of site distance.
If you're changing the grade.
Right.
And if you're putting in a new street, you need to have 350 feet.
Right.
Got it.
Yeah.
Do we have 55 mile an hours? We don't have 55 mile an hours though.
Mm-hmm.
25. No, that's 50.
160.
160 doesn't get up to 55.
A short distance of 153, most people go 55. Right past my front door, like 90.
Yes.
All right, they've all changed.
All right, Page 31, minimum street grade materials.
Another table that doesn't look like a table.
So we have tables and charts, basically.
Yeah.
Table.
6, 7, and 8 are all the same in terms of tables that don't look like tables.
And they're all on the wrong pages, too.
Yeah. 6 is on 32, 7 and 8 are on 33.
I'm gonna get rid of that.
Sorry. 6 is on 32, 7 and 8 are on 33.
Okay. Are the other two on the right pages?
Nope. 32 is, 30, uh, Table 6 should be on 32, so let's do this 31. So far, the only thing that's been right is Table 1. Same thing, tables, they're charts.
Well, no, because Table 1's on 17.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, they're all, everything's, everything's plus one, except for 1A is way off. Everything else has been plus one page.
Well, let's see what's on Page 37.
I bet it's not Table 8, or Table 9. No.
Page 37, nothing. 38, Table 9.
There's a, there is a, there is a table on Page 37, but it's not listed as a table.
It's a multrate?
The multrate, yeah. Yep. Yeah, Table 9 is on 38.
We do, we do that anyway.
Yeah.
Was there buffering requirements? Wasn't buffering requirements on another page, or no? Was I just looking at? Oh, method of stabilization, it's different.
In addition, sorry, on Table 9. In addition, sorry, on table nine. It says, all lots three acres or larger shall provide a minimum 25 foot buffer.
So that should be a note.
But it doesn't talk. Clearing restricted. Is that in reference to no clearing restrictions or clearing restricted?
Or does it apply to both?
That would be a good question to get answered. When we update this. Table 10 is on 41. Minimum corner clearance. So that's it for table 10 is just what's on page 41.
How many, how many signalized intersections do we have?
None?
None, none.
Well, signalized, would be like a free stop, free stoplight or just like?
Are we talking about stoplights? Are we talking about stop signs?
Or a blinking yellow.
Jesse, do you know what the definition of signalized is? Signalized?
Signalized when talking about corner clearance?
Is that supposed to be signalized? In someone's mind? You know what I mean? Is that supposed to mean a sign?
Blinking light or a stop sign?
Yeah, or like a curve sign. So it's signalized, not signalized. Is signalized a word?
Doesn't even sound right.
No, I think it's more like sign indicated.
Intersection, signed intersection, unsigned intersection.
Okay, well, anyway, we know that page is wrong.
Right turn in or out onlys, yeah.
Now we got a curve on 53, it doesn't even say what number it is.
Yeah, lot 53, page 53, as Roger said, has a lot standards and building size limits for Shoreland District. It's not even listed as a table.
Yep.
This needs to be added to table list. If we were to leave this in the book. Page 53 has a lot standards and building size limits, Shoreland District. Looks like a table.
Yeah, so when we're going through, when we're going through our sections, we're gonna have to call out anything that's a table, that's not identified as a table, to make sure that that gets added to the table of tables.
Because the table of tables is incomplete with tables.
Right.
Space of ditch relief culverts. That is not on 57.
It's not on 58.
Nope, it is on page 16.
Hey, look at that.
Technically, if they were in order, that'd be table 12, wouldn't it?
Or a few more.
Yeah.
At least, at least 12.
I mean, I think people will have an easier time reading the tables as a whole if they were standardized. The notes were standardized, because these aren't at all.
We need land use books for dummies.
Yeah.
Me being one of them.
Ditch relief covers shall be sufficiently sized and properly installed in order to allow for effective functioning. Where is the information to tell what that is? Oh, so that is just a statement of fact of the table?
Right.
Yeah, there are a lot of tables that.
Aren't in there.
Aren't in there. There's one on 69, one on 70.
Two sections, two half, three pages further.
Can pray that it's there.
There's enough spacing there where it says that, but I actually put that whole half part in there.
Yeah, there's a lot of strange spacing and.
Well, if I, so the subdivision ordinance, I didn't have a blank copy of the application. So I converted it to Word. Some of the crazy page type stuff that's in there that's like formalized in there. I couldn't fix it. I just left it because I couldn't figure out how to fix it. It's quite strange. I think it must be the oldest version of Word or something.
Well, I think a lot of sometimes when people are pulling these things together, they're pulling Word and like Excel charts in together, and it doesn't ever format well.
Right.
My boss is famous for that, and then handing me something, saying, can you do a press release for this? I'm like, no. Because when they reprint it, it's gonna look retarded.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of things like, you know, the bulging, like on page nine, the bulging. Four use of land and then A, B, they're all on the same. Level. Like the subbullets are on the same level as the main bullets and things like that that are. But on page eight, the subbullets are intended like they're supposed to be.
Right. Just the general.
Yeah.
It's hard to read.
A lot of formatting.
Yes, I like the.
The formatting stuff?
Yeah.
Yeah, those are, those are easy wins. Yeah, this one isn't even like content, right?
Do we agree this is just crap and we need a new one?
I mean, it feels that way, right?
Yeah.
I mean, it, you know, you look at.
No, I mean, it's not crap. The content is already, it's obviously there, but the direction, it's very hard to read.
Yeah, yeah, it definitely makes it difficult to kind of get where you need to go. I think pulling out Shoreland will be a big help. Because that's gonna take out a lot of. You know, that's a, that's a major reason why people come before the board, so.
Can we create our own Shoreland zoning?
Yeah, similar to like the subdivision.
Excellent, would be like chapter three, just rip it off chapter 1000 and state the Shoreland rules?
Right, yeah, pull that out, pull out what we have in our book. Put it together, make it its own book. That'll make everybody's life up here a lot easier, because you'll know. All right, they're here because it's in Shoreland, here's our Shoreland book. You know, they're here because it's a subdivision, here's our subdivision book. You know. It'll just make it a lot easier for us, I mean.
Tell you how many pages that is.
Oh, yeah. Oh, I'm sure it's a nightmare.
I've got around close to 200 pages.
Yeah. Yeah, and so, and then, you know, you've got that book that's 200 pages, you've got. You know, it's probably what, 20, 30 pages out of, out of our book.
I mean, there's a lot of stuff in there that isn't going to pertain to our town.
Right. Ocean.
Marshlands.
Yeah. Yeah.
We can take out of that.
Of course.
Because this just touches on stuff and doesn't give us the answers we need, so.
Yeah, yeah, that's why it'll be helpful to combine.
We had the actual Shoreland one all by itself, we'd have more information in it.
Yeah.
To run to. This one here just ask more questions and gives us information to answer.
It says this was the system with Parsons Field adopted comprehensive plan of 1990.
Yeah.
Do we have, the comprehensive plan, I have a copy, is this from like 1970?
I don't even have a copy of the comprehensive plan.
I didn't bring it in with me.
1990, that sounds right.
It references the 1970s many, many times in it.
Yeah. I'm sure it is.
I have, it starts out with like, oh, most women are home canners and.
Oh, yeah.
Manor loggers, and I was like, what the hell is this?
Yeah.
Definitely dated.
Yeah, I think, you know, going over it with a fine tooth comb, doing a lot of the. You know, a lot of the work to make sure the formatting looks right, you know. The more I look, the more things I see, you know, built lots. On page 10, built lots is underlined, number two, built lots, number three, rear lots is not underlined. You know, it's just like little formatting things here and there that are just, just silly. So I think it would be definitely beneficial to go through it.
Well, like section 10 is underlined, but section 11 isn't underlined, section 12 isn't underlined.
Right, yeah, so there's a lot of like little formatting things, I think. And I think the other advantage we have is, is the fact that. You know, we can be a lot more technical with it. You've got, you know. Title 38 MSRA, section 438B listed here. You know, if we put this in a PDF, you can have that, that's a link.
Right.
You know, so you'd link directly to those, so that if we're sitting here and something like that comes up, we can pull up our PDF version, click on the link, and we can go right straight to that rule. You know, things like that with the Shoreland, like Jesse's talking about, you know, kind of bringing this document to, you know, 2020. Yeah, I don't know if we want to go through 2020 again, but.
I don't even know if we want to go to 2022.
Yeah, I know, right? But, you know, bring, bring it forward so that it's, you know, a little more accessible, a little bit easier for. You know, whether it be us or future boards to, to use as a document. I think that. That'll certainly make it a lot easier. I know that I'm someone who's pretty technical and love to have links and things on that.
Well, I think if we stick to our sections.
Yep.
Update those and then swap them off again, well, I'll become more familiar with the book as a whole.
Agreed.
And seeing continuous, you know, picking up things other someone else didn't.
Yep.
And then Aaron can retype it and reformat it.
So something else to think about is. The book as a whole, and if you shift something around, is it going to make more sense for something to look at in the process? Like, say, Article 6 should become Article 2 or something like that. Keep that in mind too, you know, would restructuring the articles make it, make more sense?
Yep.
It's a whole 66 pages.
The Shorelanders?
Yeah.
No. No, but, you know, even if it's something where it's like, hey, you know, these are the sections that are, you know, in the, in the main Shoreland zoning. You know, these are the sections that are applicable to us, you know, exclude the marshes and the titles and the, you know.
We don't have any marshes.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Right. Yep, no, that'll be good.
Would you guys like copies of any ordinances from other towns?
They should be accessible.
I think the ones are on the websites, but I didn't, do you want me to quote them for you or do you want people?
Don't think yet.
Yeah, I don't think we're there yet. I think we should understand ours.
Yeah, that was how I found. MMA, the MMA book. Yeah, because the MMA book was, like, no one's ever, no one has a copy of the MMA book, except for Gerard.
There are copies in the planning board office, and I have the PDF.
Yeah, no, I got it. I found it on, I just Googled the name of the document, and it was on, you know, like. Scarborough's town site or somebody's, yeah.
I would love the PDFs of anything you have, because they're easily searchable.
Yeah. Yeah, that, I can remember what we were talking about. I went, went up and looked for it.
Probably workshops?
Probably. I just noticed, it's a whole. Look at page 78. Completely blank.
But I wonder what's supposed to be on it.
Well, no, it goes right from 21 to 22 correctly.
That's for notes.
Yeah. That's probably why all our pages are off. There's probably random blank pages scattered throughout.
It can't be that many, because then it would throw everything way further off, and everything's off by like one page.
That's true.
But before that, it started before it.
Oh, it started almost immediately. Yeah, I'm sure the whole, you know. Yeah, because it says titles on page seven. I don't know if you, does it even start off on seven or does it start off? No, at least it starts off right. Goes sideways somewhere.
I will try to get the, a Word doc of this to start working on the formatting. If not, I'll figure out how to convert it.
Yeah. Yeah, if we, there's only a PDF I get to talk, right? Because PDF doesn't convert one to one. Not all the time.
Yeah.
Sometimes you get lucky.
My pages are just falling out all of a sudden.
I, I pretty much find it by the five or so.
So it wouldn't do that? Yeah, I mean, I'm looking at, just something randomly popped up. It says, under site plan reviews. Classifications of projects as minor developments include A, B, and C. So is everything else not minor?
Where are you?
Page 95. It says, projects subject to site plan review are divided into two classes, minor developments and major developments. Minor developments include, and then it goes on to A, B, and C. Major developments include all other projects or uses requiring site plan review.
There's either three more lots or three underlots, minor.
That's a collision. He's talking about sector.
Oh, sector.
Yeah, projects subject to site plan review are divided into two classes, minor and major. Miners, projects involving construction or addition or conversion of less than 5,000 square feet of gross floor area. Projects involving construction or installation of less than 5,000 square feet of impervious surfaces. Or projects involving the construction, establishment of less than three lots or dwelling units. Those are minor developments.
But then it doesn't list what major developments are. It says, major developments include all other projects or uses requiring site plan review. But don't both require site plan review?
They do. Major, major projects would fall under those three criteria. So if you're over the 5,000 square feet or anything like that, it would be major. And major would. D on page 99, that would be the kind of place where they need to submit more stuff.
I can't look at those pages because my pages are falling out.
Gotcha, so applications for major development, they need to add additional things?
Right, so a minor application wouldn't require topographies or drainage. Or anything like that, but if it's a major development and it's not under those three criteria. Minor eventually require the additional information.
Okay.
But that's only if it's over 5,000 square feet of gross floor area, 5,000 feet, square feet of impervious surfaces, or more than three lots or dwellings.
Right.
Got it.
I think that's Roger's section, anyway. Good luck, Roger.
I've read it quite a bit.
I bet you have.
Sorry.
You, you gave him the good section.
Yeah.
That wasn't even intentional. All right, guys. Do we want to move forward with this in our sections?
Yep.
And make a motion to adjourn?
So moved to? Oh, yes. But probably.
We gotta make sure everyone did their homework.
As long as everybody does their homework, Harvey, we'll have them.
I'll do my homework, but I won't be here next meeting. Be here next workshop, though.
There you go. That's when we do, that's when we'd go over the homework.
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn.